All opposed, passes unanimously. Brings us to the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Last opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Takes us to item four A, committee items. I'd be looking for a motion to approve last month's.
So moved.
Board. Moved by Duckham, supported by Bear. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Brings us to item B. I'm gonna need some help from the administrator on those appointments. I don't have them in front of me. Oh, there we go. It is still the Emergency Management Advisory Council. That's a commissioner position. Commissioner Snell has a scheduling conflict. Commissioner Walls looked into it, also has a scheduling conflict. So unless there is a commissioner willing to do that, we will keep plugging along until next month.
Mr. Chair, when does, when is a meeting on this one? You know, a day and time?
First Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, it matches up with parks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now.
All right. We'll move on from that to item C, the Public Defender Quarterly Report. Mr. Fortino's here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I know that you've all received my report. I won't go through all the numbers unless there are questions about it, but I think you can see that our numbers are down a bit from last year. I don't know if we're gonna catch up by the end of December or not. I think perhaps the prosecuting attorney's office is being a little bit more selective in the cases that they bring. I don't know the reason, but the counts are down, although they are high in another way because there is, and I talk about this in the report, standard six from the MIDC, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, has passed an enacted standard six which requires certain limits of cases that attorneys can take in our public defender's offices. Standard six requires that no attorney handles more than 150 felony cases per year, and district court attorneys handle no more than 400 cases per year. We are well above that, and that's a statewide issue. The MIDC recognizes the issue of the shortage of attorneys in the state, which is unusual. You know, you always hear, when I graduated from law school, there were so many lawyers out there, you couldn't swing a dead cat without hitting one. But now they're being a little bit more selective perhaps, or maybe there just aren't as many. If you, you can see from the totals that we've got listed here, if I can find them. I'll go through it this way. Right now, we have, we have four different categories of Assistant Public Defenders. Category one is, of course, students, last year students and graduates of law school who are waiting to take the bar or pending results. We give them one year to pass the bar, and if they do, and if we have the space, we will hire them on to the next level. APD two, we have four spaces, four positions. They're all filled at this point. In APD three, we have five positions, all are filled but one, and we have one APD four, that's, APD four does basically capital cases, murders, criminal sexual conducts, things like that. So back to the MIDC, they are going to start looking at enforcement policies and begin enforcement the first month after the first payment to the county. But they, I've talked with my regional manager, and they understand the issue, MIDC understands the issue, and they are going to give us some grace as long as we have a plan in place to meet those standards. I think once we're fully staffed, and I do have an interview with an attorney on Tuesday, he's got about 30 years' experience, and he's done many, many capital cases. He'd be a great addition to the office. That'll take up some of the slack, and I just hired another attorney who has 17 years' experience in criminal law, and he can do capital cases as well. So we are, we are getting there. On the other hand, on average, our felony attorneys right now have about, ranging from 100 to 150 cases that are open, and there are some stats in here as to how many cases have been closed this year. So you can see that we're well above it. So our plan is that we're gonna present to the MIDC is that we are going to continue recruiting. We have been going to law schools, trying to recruit students to come aboard. We've been advertising in all the places we think are important, of course, the county website, CEDAM, which is the Criminal Defense Attorneys of Michigan, Indeed, and we've posted at law schools as well. We use every opportunity we can to find attorneys going to be involved in a group in, that's being started by the Ingham County, in helping with that. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is our case management system. We are working on that right now. Right now, we have what's called defender data. It's kinda wonky and kinda clunky, and the biggest problem with it, we can deal with that because people can learn it, and they can, they can, they can function with it. Problem is, we're running out of storage for the data. Everything that we have from every case, police reports, all discovery, including video, which can take up a lot of space, information, personal information about our clients, information about witnesses, information about the status of the case, who's handling the case, who's on the opposing side, and all that. All that is, is filling all our space that we have with defender data. We're looking at a specific company right now. I think it's called AVZ. They can handle all this, they can give us all the space we need. It's an easier system to use, it's more user-friendly, it can capture information that you enter in one spot, say you write an email to a client, that will automatically be migrated into the, the case history of that, of that case. So that, that makes it a lot easier because a lot of times, we have to go back and put in notes saying that we had an email and just copy the email, or we can upload it, but again, that takes up a lot of our storage space. So those are the things we're working on right now, recruiting, trying to get fully staffed, and we're working on this new system. Now, by the way, I have received a proposed contract from this other, this other company, and I believe that Vitski has submitted that to the county attorney for his review. There is a portion in that that I, the initial cost right now, unless we can negotiate it down, is $25,600, or 2600, 2600, I'm sorry, $1,000. But if we can get it below $24,000, I think we can handle that, it's in our budget. Also, they wanted $36,000, $36,000 to migrate all the data from, from our storage system and defender data. Talking with Ben Muscat, we think that we can do it ourselves. Under his supervision, we can have our attorneys transfer that information, and so I think the system will come in a lot cheaper than it initially appears. I didn't provide a copy of that to the board yet, a copy of that proposed contract, because that's just what it is. It's a proposed contract, hasn't been signed, hasn't been even, it's being considered, but we haven't decided it's time to bring it to the board yet. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. Under very last slide, the caseload for attorneys. Why such a discrepancy between caseloads for different attorneys? Current felonies, we go from 70 to 20 to 63, then we got 000, 71, 00.
Well, some of these people have left the office. Some have been here longer than others. Like a couple of the attorneys that I've mentioned have only been on board for a couple of months, so they're obviously not gonna have as many cases. And if you look, I listed the, the attorneys that are here and the attorneys who have resigned or left other, under other terms. And you'll see, for example, Steve Freeman, down the third from the bottom, right now he has zero felony open, but he has 234 cases that have been closed. But he resigned in 2023, so that's why there's a zero there. So it's not only people who have left, but it's also.
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry?
Is the microphone on?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me?
No, I couldn't.
Couldn't hear any of that?
I hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry. The discrepancies come from the length of time that the people have been in the office, basically. The attorneys who have been there the longest, obviously, have the more, have more cases than the people who haven't been there so long, and we've got some new attorneys, and we're just building their caseloads up. And the zeros that you see, that current felonies being handled by them, they're not in the office anymore. They have left.
Well, I see which ones are listed as resigned or not in the office anymore. The last individual that's indicated they're still in the office, they've had zero felonies assigned, zero felonies completed, zero misdemeanors. I mean, everything's a zero. Is this person that new that they have been assigned to nothing yet?
Yeah, yes, are you talking about John Kuzmic?
Tell me, say the name, or just count one, two, three, four, the fifth one up from the bottom. All zeros for their caseload.
Yes, he's new, and he would be doing misdemeanors. Right now, what he's doing is, he's, right now, what he's doing is video arraignments. We build them up from video arraignments, eventually they go to pre-trials. Once we feel they have enough experience, we move them into second chairs, and they observe and/or assist on trials, and then eventually, they take their own trials, and he's, he's at that, these people are at that position. That's because of the APD one moving to an APD two.
So that particular individual is doing tasks that are not in any of these categories?
Correct.
If you could add those categories, it'd be helpful to me, because it looks like this person's doing nothing.
No, I, I should have added that, but that's what he does. He does, he does all the video arraignments every day, morning and in the afternoon, so.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham.
Good morning, Mr. Fortino.
Good morning.
How many people do you have on your staff altogether? Do you know?
14 attorneys. We have a social worker, administrative assistant, and we have six legal secretaries.
Okay. And how many of those work from home?
From home, none of them work from home, they all work in the office. There are times when they work remote. We try to accommodate them when they have a sick child or something like that, so they can, they can work from home so they can take care of their child and get their work done. By the way, we do have a way to monitor the work that they're doing, and we do, we do monitor that they are working.
All right. Thank you very much.
If no other committee member questions or comments, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fortino. Have a good day.
Thank you. Have a good day, Joe.
Takes us to item D, 911, excuse me, 911 Quarterly Report. Mr. Hannan's here. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. For my quarterly report, on the second page, talks about the FOIAs, we did, completed 190, 190 FOIAs using the QA software, and so far, 397 through DHS prosecutors, things of that nature. Total 63 Pings so far this year, a few classes for dispatch training. We completed about four different exercises with four different companies and the water treatment plant as well. We also did a state exercise on communication, what happens when everything fails, phone lines, radios, how do we communicate? We also did a version upgrade for Tyler Tex, which is our computer software for law enforcement, fire, and dispatch. Interface with Huron Valley ambulance and 911, looks like Tyler gave us a date of mid-October. The CAD to CAD interface with Lenawee County is completed. We are still working through some of the hiccups on that one. We completed our lean audit, we were in compliance, and then different events that we participated in also throughout the county. I have some pictures in the last slide of that. Call breakdowns, as you can see, 88% of our calls are cell phones now, then also the SMS texting through the phone system, we've done 768, and then our prepared live, we've done 798. We use prepared live a lot to do abandoned calls, so when the abandoned call comes in, we'll text them and get an answer that way. Just a different way to do it. Call count year-to-date, some of the months have dropped, really haven't, knocking on some wood, but we really haven't ever had a really bad storm lately, so that's the reason why the drops. The average talk time is 83 seconds right now. And then the one slide, 14 calls a year compared to the last four years. You look at the statistics there. And then the breakdown between every agency we use in Jackson County, whether it's Mutual Aid, AMA, it's all there. And then some of the different events we've held this year, we did a job fair now to American One event. We also did one out at Western Schools, and then the back-to-school blast at the American One Event Center as well.
Have any success at any of them?
We got a few applicants, yeah. Last, I think our last applicant pool, we had around 30 or 40.
Good.
So pretty good.
Any questions, committee members? We'll go with Commissioner Duckham and then Commissioner Bear.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Staff-wise, how are you doing?
We had one resign, and we let one go for performance during training, so we are down a couple, but we just hired, tentative hired a few. One of the ones we actually hired was from the Jacksonary Career Center, which we do internships throughout the year with them, so one of the graduates. with them. So one that graduated this year wanted to come back and actually work for us.
Okay, so you're down, currently down one active?
No, three active.
Three active? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. Good morning, Jason.
Morning.
Question from some of my township's fire chiefs. They state that based on a previous agreement, that the 911 center is supposed to be funding a radio replacement fund. Are you funding a radio replacement fund?
That was never agreed upon back in, I think, 1917, 18? It was never agreed upon, no. That was not.
So there is no agreement?
There is no agreement on that, no.
How are some of the local fire chiefs confused about that?
I'm unsure. I mean, they've brought that up several times, and we've never told them ever that we were going to refund the radios. The radios were originally purchased back, want to say, 1718. They were advised that they would be theirs, and they would have to buy new ones at that time, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I'll be, she and him tonight, I'll pass that information on. Thank you.
Well, Mike probably has some more info.
Well, I would just concur that I was part of that whole conversation as well. And in fact, it was all we could do to afford to buy the radios the first time around. And we're still paying the debt service on that. So no, there was always the intent that, you know, we're going to, since we're replacing all the radios and we're switching to a whole new system, we can afford to buy it, or we'll borrow the money, so we can afford to buy them. And everyone else needs to be planning on their replacements over time. The county cannot buy radios for 19 townships. We don't have money.
Thank you. There's no other questions or comments? Chairman Shatwell.
Thank you for what you do, and I appreciate all the hard work your staff does. I know it can be a thankless job. When I'm looking at your calls by agency?
Yes, sir.
We have involved here domestic situations, suicide, suicidal subject or suicide. Do we also reach out then to either Lifeways or some type of psychological analysis to help the officer deal with, with these situations and help de-escalate them? Or does 911 only contact local fire and law enforcement?
So like, Jackson Police Department actually has one with one officer that travels around to take, to help assist them in some of those calls. I know some of the Sheriff's Department members are actually trained by Lifeways. And when they go there and they see that the subject is in need of different help, they either call us to call the crisis center, or they will call the crisis center themselves to have somebody come out from the group.
I noticed, the only reason why I say that, I see our numbers run between pretty much the high point of 2020 of 500 to where we're at today of roughly one and a half a day. I would think that there would be some type of local training done for the fire departments also, when they're having to deal with these situations, especially going forward. I just, you know, I know that if you got 467 of them, they didn't space them out at 4:30 in the afternoon every day.
Right.
You know, so I just want to make sure we're getting the proper training and everything on two sides. One, for our, our people to be able to de-escalate, but also for our people to deal with the incident after the occurrence. Because whether or not the person actually commits suicide or not, there can be a lot of other things that have gone into that situation. And having to emotionally deal with that can be difficult time and time again.
And I know usually after like a suicide, we actually, whatever the agency where it's just located, they'll have a debriefing with counselors and stuff there that dispatchers, firemen, and law enforcement, and EMS can all attend.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Duckham.
I was looking at your 14 comparison call-to-date list. You have homicide in there. Is there a section that would list assaults?
Oh, yeah. There's other call types for assaults, yes.
It's not listed, then?
No, it's not. I'm sorry. Something I can add in there.
Okay, because without a real newspaper in town anymore, to find out what's going on out on the street, you almost have to get into a Facebook group site, 911 group site or something, because you list shots fired. But it seems to be the, the new way right now is stabbings. You see a lot of stabbings. So it looks like we got a very peaceful community, kind of. But it doesn't show that. But we don't know how many assaults we have, stabbings.
I can take some of the other stuff out, like the traffic stops and stuff like that, or it's...
Well, you know, we got stabbings, we got people going to the hospital ER with shot in the arm, shot in legs. That's just a, either a warning shot or a bad shot. So we got a lot of violence out there, and it don't show here.
I can make some changes and add those to it.
I mean, the paper don't report it.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Jason. Have a great day.
You too.
Commissioners, just want to keep in mind, we got about a half an hour left until that special meeting. So trying to let these guys get through their reports as quick as they can. Next item is Airport Hangar 159A ground lease. Good morning, Juan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Kennedy. This is a brand-new hangar that's being built on the airport, Hangar 159A. Sir requests to approve the 20-year ground lease for this hangar.
Committee members, are there any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. Good morning, Juan.
Good morning, Tony.
Got a couple of questions here. Item in your cover letter, background. Individuals need to have a ground lease approved by the county. All the various ground leases that we have previously approved, there's no document that the county commission chair signs off on. So how do you, in your, if this is required for your lease agreement, how do you document in this lease agreement or in that file that you actually did receive board approval?
We, and the ground leases are signed by the chairman of the airport board. But what we do is the board docs is our document of record that shows when we go to the county board to get approval. And we've had board docs since 2018 for the airport.
So the minutes of the meeting serve that function, that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That makes sense. Under current situations, the last sentence, the airport manager is recommending that the county approve a conditional approval for the ground lease for Hangar 159A. On the last page, under recommendations, the airport board and the airport manager recommend that the county approve a new ground lease for Hangar 159A. So are you, in one point, you're asking for a conditional lease, and another place, you're just asking for a lease. What were those conditions that you were thinking of when you wrote this?
So the, in order for the individual to start construction, they need to have a lease in place. And that's what I'm asking for, is for a ground lease approval from the county. The conditions are that if Blackman Township does not give all the permits to occupy the hangar, then the lease is voided at that time. And so there's really no way for us to, to allow an individual to start building on county property and, and then not allow them to occupy that property unless we make it clear that in order to occupy the property, they have to have approval from Blackman Township.
Okay, so which is it that you want right now?
I want the, I want the ground lease approved.
A conditional lease or a full lease?
I want the full lease approved.
Thank you. In the State of Michigan Department of Transportation, their document, prior to commencing any excavation, proponent must coordinate all project work with a variety of agencies. They must also receive approval from the county drain commissioner before they can start any excavation at all. And before they can start any excavation, they also have a, need to have a soil erosion sedimentation control permit issued by the Jackson County Department of Transportation. So there's additional things that they must do beyond what is in this department transportation document. How do you follow up on those issues to make sure that the permit from the drain commissioner, the permit from?
That's my apologies. I did not include those documents on the file. But we do have the permit from Jackson DOT, and we have the approval from the county drain commissioner. I can provide those to you before the full county board, if you like.
Okay, so you do have those permits in hand already?
That is correct.
Thank you. I have another question here. The last time we looked at a ground lease was May 23rd this year. And I asked, how are the, how is the ground lease fee calculated? And you said it varies based on the Consumer Price Index, and it's recalculated every year. So that was the explanation of given back in, in May. So that ground lease for Hangar 202, it was 50 cents a square foot for the lease amount. And now you're asking 41 cents for the ground lease and 6 cents for the lawn maintenance, so 47 cents. So why is this lease less than the lease from May? The Consumer Price Index hasn't gone down. So I'm still not understanding, how do you determine these prices?
Yes, sir. That's a good question. I'll explain again. So we have a rate for non-commercial ground leases, which this Hangar 159A is. And that's 41 cents per square foot for 2024. The one that we looked at in May, that was for a commercial aviation hangar. And that was, that's why we're giving the 50 cents per square foot. And if you look at the appendix A, or the attachment A on the hangar, we charge 50 cents per square foot for the building, the square footage of the building, plus an additional square footage for parking space, and additional square footage for ramp area. So that lease from May of 2024, we're charging quite a bit more. That was three times the footprint of the building on that one. And that was 50 cents per square foot. But once again, that's a non-commercial, that's a commercial aviation use hangar, the one from May. If you like, I can provide all the different rates for all the different types of hangars for you to have in your file. Would that be beneficial?
Yes, that would be.
Okay, I can do that.
All right.
That's all the questions I have, so thank you, Juan.
Thank you, Commissioner Bear. I'd be looking for a motion to forward this to the full board with recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Moved by Williams. Will you, Alfred, support Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Supported by Bear. Any discussion? If you could, do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Passes.
Passed unanimously. Thanks a lot, Juan. Have a great day. Now we're to Jackson County Department of Transportation. The first topic is Moscow Road, Norville Road, and Springport Road, Michigan Department of Transportation contract.
Good morning. So this is a normal M.D. contract for a project. This is a safety project that we were awarded, and it's for sinusoidal mumble strips on the three roads listed. It's a $375,000 project, $337,500 is the grant, and $37,500 is our match.
Okay, pretty straightforward, commissioners. Are there any questions on it? Okay. If not, I'd be looking for a motion to forward it to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear, supported by Walls. Any discussion? If not, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Walz?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Chairman Kennedy?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Takes us to the monthly report.
All right. So our monthly is pretty straightforward. We have our updates for our projects in there. I can go through it, or I know you have a special meeting, I can just take questions. It's up to you.
We've got, you're the last item, and we've got 20 minutes, so why don't you just briefly?
All right. So our first slide is our roundabout at My Nerd Park. That's done. We're just waiting for consumers to turn on the lighting there. For our county farm project, the new signals are in, yeah?
Are you advancing slides?
Oh, sorry. I can if... Okay, next one. Sorry. So that's the roundabout, that as soon as lights are turned on by consumers, then it will be completely open to public. Next slide.
Next slide, please.
So County Farm Road project, the signals are installed. The ones at airport are functioning. The ones at Ironshire are still in flash mode. And the pavement repairs from, remember last year, we were having some complaints about some of the pavement out there. They'll be out there milling and resurfacing, I think it's four spots, four spots tomorrow.
What was wrong with it?
Uh, just, well, a couple of the spots are the joints. If you go out there, you'll see at the tapers, they're kind of wide. They're not tight like they're supposed to be, so they're milling some of that out. And then just the workmanship. But Michigan Pavings stand behind it. They did not fight us on anything, and they're fixing it. Then we go to our local road projects. Keep going. So our Blackman Township, we've got some pictures of the CIR going on there. We did Morel and Cunningham this year was cold-in-place recycled. So that was 2.33 miles of cold-in-place recycling we did on the Blackman project. The rest of the time, the equipment's been used for crush and shapes. So I just want to remind you guys, we are not doing a lot of the cold-in-place recycling, but that equipment is used all season with crush and shapes and milling projects. And then there's some updates for the other local road projects. If you have any specific questions about them, Jim is here and can answer them. But otherwise, if they're completed or in progress, he's got the statuses there. Grover Road is about 50% complete. The rain has not been our friend on that project. They're going to be placing two miles of gravel, or finishing two miles of the gravel today, tomorrow. And then they'll move on to the next mile section to complete that. And then we just have in there some, an update on the Village of Parma. We were, they enacted a village-wide millage, and they consulted with us to do the engineering for that. So we are, we put out the bid, and then we're overseeing the construction for them on that. And they're paying 100% for our engineering services. And then for maintenance, we've got our patching numbers in there. I started equating it to a mile of road that we could pave. So we're, for the, so far that, this year, we're at 1.39 miles we could have paved with our patching material we put down. For the month of July, we had 98 total calls for potholes. There's still 13 open. But remember, that probably, those came in the end of July, so that's why they're still open. We do not have any 30-day-old pothole complaints. Then I just put in, and we'll keep track, this is the contracted patch Then I just put in, and we'll keep track, this is the contracted patching, so we'll update you monthly on the roads that they've done with a map so you can see the program's going very smoothly and efficiently. We've had a lot of calls of people calling in saying the patching looks great. They don't know who did it, they're just saying it looks great, so they're happy. Then for maintenance, we've got our four brush mowing tractors out. They started last Monday moving around the county, so we'll keep an update on this map for that, but we do have a before and after. So you can see that the brush mowing does clear that road edge quite a bit when we get through there. I think they're trying to get two or three passes with it, so it is going to take a little time to get through the county, but we're trying to clear up that overgrown brush. Any questions?
Commissioner Walls and then we'll go to Commissioner Baer.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for your work when you came out to Hanover and talked to the farmers. I know they were a little rough on you, I'm sorry.
It's all right, that's our job.
But I think overall, we left that meeting with a feeling that the commission and JDOT are working in their favors. I still think the canopy's probably going to be an issue for some of that big equipment and cutting back, but also I will say the brush mowing has made a huge difference and hopefully that will help with the deer car accidents because now cars can see the deer and hopefully the deer can see the cars. So hopefully that will be helpful in that respect as well.
We've also, our contracted tree crew that we have working for us, we've transitioned to them doing a week of tree removals to a, and then the next week they're doing canopy work, so we're alternating that. So we are working on the canopy. I would urge people, I don't know if I want to urge them, but if there's roads that the farmers know are overgrown and they, they should call in so we can get it on the list.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baer.
Thank you. I N G., the, we now have four pothole patching crews on contract and we have one pothole patching crew from JDOT. Do you have a feel yet, what is the ratio? How many, how many of the crews are, how much patching is being done by the four crews under contract and how much pothole patch is done by JDOT crews?
Pretty much a hundred percent's done by the contracted crews. Remember, we asked the board to help us with that because we're short-staffed. So the contracted crews are doing the hot-mix patching. We have, we're trying to have two Dura Patchers out with our crews because the Dura Patchers are a different type of filling potholes that we don't have contracted out, but our people are all on projects or doing maintenance now.
Okay, so for the moment, it's pretty much a hundred percent contracted and that will vary as...
I didn't hear the end of that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Duckham?
Good morning, Angela. Can you tell me, do we expect to have Blackman Township completed this year?
No. We have been telling everybody next year for a while now.
Is it going to take most of next year's construction season?
All construction season.
That it will be completed?
Next year's program is about the same size as this year's.
Yeah, because up in my area, the people's not feeling the love. You know, we're just...
With what?
Well, then they need to pony up some money.
If it's construction, then yeah.
Well, this is stuff we've already, this is stuff we've already get.
Because...
They normally have roads chlorided for dust control by Memorial Day. It was...
Well, the dust control's on second round. Everybody's gotten dust control. Every single township should feel the love there. Pothole patching is countywide, Dura patching's countywide, tree trimming's countywide. Everything else is countywide. It's just construction that's not, and that takes the township participation.
I beg to differ. We did not get chloride put on the roads in Norville Township to almost the Fourth of July. It's supposed to be a pre-summer event and we went about a third of the summer with windows closed and air conditioning on because you couldn't leave the windows open because of the dust. And that was a month late.
Was it the ninety-six degree temperature days?
Pardon me?
Wasn't it the ninety-six degree temperature days?
Thank you.
Okay, any other committee member questions or comments? If not, yes, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick question for you. How many employees do you have out on the roads?
Daily, depending on how, I mean, we should have about, I think it's fifty, fifty-ish?
Fifty-ish and how many do you have?
I can email you exactly.
Okay, that would be great. And then how many do you have total?
He's really quizzing me. Can I email you that?
Sure, that's fine.
Where, I tried to get how many down we are right now. Last I knew, we were fourteen down.
Fourteen down, okay.
But I can email everybody what our staffing, I'll get the report that I get on a monthly from Erica, so you know exactly our, what our full staff is and how many were down.
Perfect, that'll work.
Sorry.
Thank you. That's all right, not a problem. Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I just add that the patching crews, whether it's ours or the ones you've subbed out, I've received a lot of positive feedback that they're doing better than they were several months ago.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, so...
And I do to add, I know you're trying to wrap it up, but I have to take back not a hundred percent because last Thursday we did have crews patching because we did, we had, we were doing different things that day. So we had some crews patching Thursday, but on a normal day, it's going to be a hundred percent contracted.
Okay, great. Be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Walls, supported by Duckham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you for you and your team's work. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Takes us to item five A, I'd be looking for a motion to pay the claims.
So moved.
Moved by Baer, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item five B, other minutes. I don't have that in front of me, do you? So are there any other minutes? There are no other minutes. Takes us to item C, reporting schedule. You go ahead and read it, it's fine.
Sheriff, semi-annual. Prosecutor, semi-annual. Public defender, quarterly. 911 quarterly. JC dot quarterly, financial only.
Thank you. That takes us to item six. It's the second opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Last opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, public comments closed. Is there any committee member comments? Seeing none, committee member comments are closed and meeting is adjourned.